All right, it's seven o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Who's secretary? Kathy, your secretary?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I'm already writing.
Um, so. We'll start with the minutes of the previous meetings, which Grace circulated.
I see.
Ironically, anyone have any questions or concerns?
Will be approved the minutes as distributed.
Okay, excellent. All in favor, Kathy's not here, so we have to do a roll call.
That's the only reason I didn't show up. I.
Bill?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Margaret?
Hi.
Okay, treasures report.
You have one voucher that needs to be approved for $29.99 per file for this. Across Amazon.
Is that the one I already signed?
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess we're ratifying our signature.
All right, um, and we don't usually vote on vouchers here, I mean, for $29.
We can do it yearly, or we typically will have the chairman authorized to sign.
And I'm happy if you want to put a cash limit on that.
No.
Do we want to have a motion to?
So moved.
I have a second to the, okay, all in favor, Kathy?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Margaret, hi. Okay, anything else from the treasures?
No.
Nope. Planners report.
All right. I'll try to keep it brief, but I got a lot on this. Oh, and what I started doing with the EDC as of last meeting is I started submitting my planners' report ahead of time for everyone to just review, and then if the board, for their sake, like it did last night, because they just voted to accept the planners' report and like, like at town meeting, if there was any questions on anything, they might, you know, pull up the hold something for discussion. So often we talk about that more later, if you think that's a good way to go.
You want to be held, held to them?
I know, because I am often writing these right. If, if I can get them out with plenty of time, yeah.
A good thing.
So I'll, so I had prepared and submitted a $1.6 million grant to cover extra costs that was expected to be incurred for the sewer and water project. Fortunately, I met with District 3 DOT yesterday in Worcester with Town Manager and DBW Director, that will be unnecessary, which was great news to hear. And so I was keeping that close, not trying to ring any alarm bells on that one before making sure that we're on good terms for that. So fortunately, there was just a miscommunication, I think, between DOT and our consultants on that. It was, it was, it was expected, the original information that we had received is that the town's gonna have to cover like a substantial gap for repaving after disturbing the road, but it ended up coming back to more of like a 14-foot gap, which is very reasonable. So. Quick update on that, that's moving forward.
When is that project scheduled to start sometime soon?
We're hoping so. We're just about ready to go out to bid on that, but we're, we're in, myself, Town Manager, DBW Director, Town Council are all in discussion with Governor's Landing to establish a memorandum of agreement considering their contribution. So we're trying to get that nailed down, obviously, before we go out to bid. But the only thing right now that's hanging us up about going out to bid for that project, so we're hopefully we can get it done within the next, by the end of next calendar year, hopefully done, hopefully by the end of.
Oh, yeah.
I think so. So if it, once it starts moving, it might move very quickly. The Select Board at their last meeting had discussion regarding the expression of interest for Holy Angels. And so Craig Weinfuss, Lynda Gay, and another gentleman, I believe his name is Matt Fear, they had, they were the authors of the one and only submission for the expression of interest. So Select Board just had them in to discuss what it was that they were planning, which is some sort of like community slash art center, cultural center. So it was an interesting, interesting submittal, and I can, I can distribute that if everybody's interested in seeing that. No actions being taken right now, that was just an initial conversation on that thing. I'm still working on getting a, planning and engineering firm to do redevelopment scenarios regarding Holy Angels and the extending block down to Grove Street. And that incorporates grant funds that I've received, as well as it'll incorporate earmarks that have been dedicated from the EDC. So I'm just approaching, I've already talked to Weston and Sampson, I've gotten a bid from them, and I need to talk to, I'm talking to BSC Group as well as Ty and Bond, so I'm hoping to get something in front of the EDC for them to review on that, at the very latest, their July meeting, and then again, hopefully you'll see relatively quick movement on that, once I can get an engineering firm on board. Also be reaching out to Dodson and Flinker, who prepared the Upton Center Visioning Project in 2019 as a part of the earmark funds, the EDC had voted to do this, pretty much the same exact thing for West Upton. So I have to reach out to them for a scope of services, and hoping to get movement on that in the near future. The EDC had an initial discussion and presentation from the Metro West Regional Transit Authority. They came in the, at the last meeting to give a presentation on the potential benefits of joining MWRTA to become a community, a member community. And kind of went through the pros and cons of that, the EDC was enthused by it. It seems like the town could stand to benefit from it at no additional cost to the town already. The town already is dedicated on the town's behalf, $60,000 goes to the MBTA as an MBTA community, but the town receives really no services because we're so disjointed from the other communities that actually receive T service. So that money can, to oversimplify it, that money can be transferred over to MWRTA as a transit authority, and then they can provide supporting services to our senior center for the ADA paratransit, you know, bus service that, that provides. So it seems as though Face Valley of the town really could only stand to benefit from it, but obviously we're taking it slow, the EDC recommended that they have a discussion with the Select Board as a next step to just have that initial presentation, have that initial discussion, and see if the Select Board wants to take it any further, and obviously there won't be any commitments as a result of that. It'll just be basically deferring to staff to say, identify next steps.
I'm through the chair, can I ask a question on this one? Has there been any identified need for additional transportation on top of what the community center and the town vans already do?
Well, there's been identified need as far as the amount of, I guess, rides that are dedicated on behalf of the community center bus, so I think it was around like 700 rides were provided, provided within the last year. And so this is not, you know, we work with, I mean, MWRTA is interested in stepping in to fill, helping out with services, obviously they'd wanna, you know, while they're a nonprofit, they, they still need to make money, so they'd wanna, you know, probably be looking to expand services except at some point, but they're not, they would not want to pressure the town into establishing any new services, and they're not as far as like dedicated bus lines or anything like that, Upton's nowhere near the need for something like that now.
So any connection to a, to an MBTA station or a train center?
I think, because MWRTA could, I mean, potentially, I, I would, I think it would require during the study, like a real survey in town, but there are a lot of people in Upton that commute to Boston and a shuttle directly from Upton Center to the train station in Framingham might be a.
That could be provided, it's obviously way too early to identify that right now as, as a need. They would want to do their own, like you said, survey to justify implementing some sort of regular service, but I believe, and I could be mistaken, and we can get this all clarified, you know, at some point, obviously we're not looking to rush into any commitment or relationship with MWRTA. But it, I think there was a, some sort of service that is a basically equivalent to a dial-a-ride, which so, and then by just being a member community, the community would have access to getting those connections, Kathy, that you're talking about, to, to either stations or to, I don't know, I don't know if they drop people off at Logan Express or something like that. But they, they do provide those services that are pay-per-use services on, and on-call basis as well. But that's obviously at a cost, it's not, that wouldn't be just paid for through the potential $60,000 that would be dedicated on the town's behalf.
Yeah, well, I, I guess that's my question, it's like, you know, it seems that we haven't identified, at least to the best of my knowledge, that there's a need for additional transportation for seniors. You know, and so it looks like we're rushing in to get in, you know, involved with that without considering, you know, transportation to, as Margaret said, to a, to a rail hub, to a rail station, other than if people pay for it, sort of like a cab service, which isn't what we're looking for, it's sort of, if we have $62,000 to spend, you know, in, in my mind, that would be healthier for the town, it'd be healthier for downtown because you have it leaving at a certain time in the morning, you know, 6:30 or so and coming back, I mean, it's not perfect, but I take it, leave at 6:30 in the morning and get back at 6:30 at night, you know, that would, you know, you have coffee shops and it would feed some sort of economic development downtown as well. And it just seems that, you know, sort of by default saying, oh, we're gonna provide services to elderly, which I'm one of, so I appreciate that, but it just seems redundant.
Sure, yeah, it would, and this is a much larger conversation, I'd be happy to get into more detail on it. It's not, I'll just clarify, it's not $60,000 that can just be spent on anything, it's, it's money that is dedicated on the town's behalf that goes to MBTA that the town is not receiving any services for currently. And so it, it's, it stands to potentially benefit the town by partnering with a transit authority, should the town want to, to support existing services. But to, to your point, identifying need, I mean, we're, we're, you know, and I've emphasized this to the, to the EDC, and I think I mentioned this at the Select Board as well, but we're not looking to rush into anything by any means, we're just identifying potential, potential i- is all. And there will be a robust community reach out to the senior center to basically investigate, Kathy, what you're talking about, which is need, and if there is need. And then also, if there's, if there's a big hesitancy on the part of the town or the folks that use the current service to even engage in a different service altogether, we wouldn't want to enter into any sort of agreement with, with, with any agency that isn't going to provide the town with any sort of benefit. So it's just.
I have one more question, then I'll shut up. So from what you're saying, it sounds like the MBTA is telling us what they will do for us, rather than saying what we want them to do for us. And what they will do for us.
Are you talking about MBTA or MWR?
M, whatever the, MW, M.
MWRTA.
MW.
Metro West.
Okay, Metro West Regional, okay. Yeah, and it seems like, you know, because I, you know, again, I, I don't.
Well, they're, they're telling us what we, what, what they can do with that money that's already dedicated on the town's behalf, if the town doesn't receive any services for it.
And the only thing they can do is something for seniors.
At, at this time, yeah.
Why? Why can't they do, I mean, why can't they look at other options?
They, they absolutely can, but that's, that's just what, what the conversation has been so far. Because that, that, that $60,000, my understanding is what would otherwise pay for that service from the MBTA. So that, that service is typically, th- those monies would be dedicated on behalf of the town to get the service from the MBTA, which is branded as the ride.
So is this, the $60,000, is that, I know that it is given on behalf of the town and the MBTA, is that sort of branded for the ride or for senior shuttles, or is it?
It's just MBTA money, $60,000 goes to the T every year on behalf of the town. It, it's just the way that those funds are typically used is to provide for paratransit services in a, in a town like.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to.
Continuing discussions and, and seeing what they have to say.
Absolutely.
I do, I mean, I don't think they're gonna do anything if they didn't do a survey first to understand the need or the potential, because a lot of people aren't willing to use public transit. Unfortunately. Okay, anything else in the planners' report?
Yeah, I will, I'll just mention quickly, EDC also, and I brought, I brought this up before to the planning board, the EDC is interested in pursuing, allowing for some sort of research and development laboratory use by amending the zoning bylaw, so they had that discussion again, they're, they'll be sending a letter to the, the planning board just encouraging the planning board to support, an article sometime in the future. That is mostly it. I'll just, I'll just leave it at, as I mentioned last time, 40B, next meeting is June 20th, which is a Thursday next week, that I expect that to be a very quick meeting with, with them specifically, probably give any updates as to where everything stands as far as on the applicant side and the peer review side. And then possibly any, any questions from the board with regard to the waiver request. And then, and then they'll be continuing that to the July 17th meeting, but I don't expect robust conversation at all because the town won't, we won't have our attorney available for that meeting, so. And very last, Pat Roach has submitted for his retirement.
Oh.
And so, his last day is the 20th.
When's his last day?
Wow, 28th of June.
So soon.
Very soon.
Only been 50 years.
He's 70 now, right? Or is he over 70? Yeah.
Yeah.
Him and Chief Bradley, this town is like.
Ongoing search then?
Yeah.
Okay. Greens and pors.
That's it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the? All right, so we can move on to ANR for 16 Mendon Street. It's here for 16 Mendon. You want to just kind of briefly tell us what you're planning to do?
Yeah, this is, you know, Caroline, who has just a large lot on the corner of Mendon Street, Pleasant Street, Route 140 is over here. This is four-way stop sign goes down to the schools. She'd like to create a new 15,000-square foot lot here. It's town's only town wall. It's a flat lot, it's right on the floor. She'd like to, someone might build a house.
You got your minimum of one street, at least, you got your 15,000. In six. Nothing's built on it, there's no slopes, right, just nothing of.
10 feet.
It's just pretty basic.
But this is all wet right along here, is it?
No, it's not, it's not even dry.
Oh, okay.
And driveway has to be.
It's, it's.
Driveway must be off of Pleasant Street.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a profile, it's pretty flat, it's about less than 3%.
Yeah, my only thing is that you can't come into Mendon Street because you have to exit through your frontage, so your driveway has to be on Pleasant Street.
You don't back over there, that's all.
Yeah. It is. It has to be 20. Looks like to me, you got your location, you got your data table, you got your zoning.
Anyone have any questions about this one?
Yeah. The setback here, you didn't put it because, because it makes, it's only 10 feet, isn't it?
Yeah, it's just, it also meets the setback.
Okay.
Get two, get two copies?
Are you emotional?
I'll move with the.
Second? Second? Do you want to start this, oh, the signature blocks are showing on those, we have two signs, one unsigned.
This will be the first time for me, what am I signing, where am I signing?
Okay.
The rules are, the chairman signs the top block first.
Okay, so the, so this is a Form A for ANR, yeah, we're just, we're just saying that we.
Just want to sign.
That it means, it means all of the right company.
We're actually signing the planning board approval list non-free.
Right, right. And it means all of the requirements for saying they're not required.
Yeah, but if, if it doesn't, doesn't meet our requirements, we, we have, have no line. That's about our only.
And this is that on these two paper copies?
Yep, yep. We have an unsigned right here. Yeah.
One person, that means never. For the sessions.
So, anyone else?
And then the last article, this is important.
Well, have to be signed. No, I can be.
Last one to sign is a date.
Sign, I did.
It's a date.
The 11th. She's on some.
And drive by.
Oh, that's.
It's a, we get the two.
You have one sign.
You already have one sign, one outside?
Yes.
So we have three total.
I thought we said, I thought we said two.
I only said.
Five months.
Okay, it used to be, or we did the. Definitely used to be two sides and one side. Okay, one is fine.
Thank you, I'm counting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was on the plan, you know, like 30, something, 35 years ago.
Hasn't changed. Room's smaller than this here, and basketball still goes on in basketball. And gun shooting range was right.
I remember when the gun shooting range was back there.
Fun times.
Thank you very much, thank you. Keep the.
Nice one.
All right, thank you. Moving on to identify the community's compliant zoning district location and discussion of draft bylaw. Do we want to continue this, or?
Yeah, I was gonna say, my apologies, I didn't mean to put that on before Five Forks, if you want to.
Rocket Road on this?
Rocket Road?
Yeah, let's just make Rocket Road the.
Oh, yeah.
Give me an argument.
Hey, Tom, that was my idea from the last meeting, don't go stealing it.
Well, nobody ever accepted my idea of, of having a, a pot cafe in Holy Angels called Holy Smokes.
It has submitted an EOI.
I'm sure it would have gone over real well on this, too. All right, so Five Forks Farm, 153 North Street, Five Fork Fox, that's you, come on up.
All right. Well, Bill, nice to see you here. Congratulations, another thing to bug you on, about one of your new blocks. So, thank you guys, I know this is a bit not to the T, so.
Well, we have the.
All right, I will practice this by saying, I know nothing. I farm over on North Street at the old East Cleveland property. I'm here to answer a lot of questions, as you may have. I know in working with Concom, like Bill has, I think Bill has worked on this property before for
Too long.
Too long. And, you know, I hope in the last, what is it now? It's gonna be 12 years since we've been there. I hope we've made a little bit mark, made a little mark. And I think our plan, or the plan is to sort of set it up for future growth, not only for us directly, but for whoever will be next in line to take the, the property over, sort of, you know, set anyone up really for success in carrying out an agriculture operation there. I think I've been to every board slash person to talk to about this that I know of. I think it involves, and you guys might already be used to this, but it involves an octopus leg of boards, people.
But, but for site plan approval?
Yes.
It's the one, and nobody else.
I hope so.
Did I leave the town bylaws here?
But we did send this out for comments from, from various forums and.
Yes. If I may, I got some issues, my, my startup issue with the application itself.
Okay, because we were going to discuss whether we were gonna wait for feedbacks on whether we needed an engineer.
But process-wise, the, there's a conflict with the actual application in, in our bylaws. The application is for the driveway and parking area improvements, which are allowed by the planning board, usually under minor site plan, but only where there's a approved site plan on file. Does this have a previously approved site?
I can, I cannot find records indicating that there was a previously approved site plan for this.
And the planning board, according to our bylaws, cannot approve just a driveway and parking area approved. It's necessary to go through the site plan process itself. And once that's done, these type changes could be done to minor change.
I thought we last time were discussing whether we even needed a site plan process, whether there was enough parking.
Possibly, but if you apply for a site plan, planning board approval of this, it has to be a previously approved site plan before we can address minor changes. So I have a solution. I think you have enough here. Please, I need more sites.
So one of the questions that I talked to Michael a long, long, long time ago is even if we needed to go through planning board, as I.
You can, but if there's a complaint by any of the neighborhood or anybody that you're operating, so proper. You'd have to go.
Okay.
But I, I, I think.
The long one or sweet one?
So.
But I have it, if I make, if I can finish. So I think the solution is, is simply to change the application form to say site plan approval. Proceed as normal, and the reason I say that is if I look at your application, you have everything that's. you have everything that's required to complete site, the initial site, without doing anything else. Planning boards are allowed technic, waiver of technical compliance in an agricultural zone. It's very, it's a term of site plan, it could be McDonald's, you know, McDonald's has a site plan, but this is not McDonald's.
Right.
This is something that probably should be kept as pristine as it is, and not, not take a lot of changes and not. It's not a lot of strict compliance with, like, you, uh, on a site plan, it's supposed to give us all of the, the town utilities that are in the air. Uh, the, the.
Elevation.
That doesn't take much space.
Right, the elevation, I don't, we, we don't need that. Uh, you have the perimeter, um, we have an assessor's map that has the perimeter in there for all business, paying taxes on it on a certain amount of land, so I don't think we need any more than we have, change this from, um, what we can't do, which is a parking improvement, and just approve it as a site. And, uh, I don't think you'd have to do anything else, I think it's just the, the technical term of we can't legally just do parking, you have to, if we can do parking, if you've got a site plan on, previously approved. So let's just. This is the same.
Through the chair, um, doesn't site plan approval require notification to a butters and a public hearing, or?
If we're gonna have a public hearing, we're gonna have one, what difference does it make? You need one for both of them.
But, but the question was actually before was whether or not this actually rose to the level of needing one at all.
How many spaces? It's thirties.
Thirty, thirty, yeah.
Or, the, the neighborhood should know. They're, I, 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 I'm always in favor of inviting the neighborhood, they had ones that are affecting, that are affected. So, uh, a public hearings, I would recommend it, and get your site plan, get it on file and.
I guess I'm, I'm, I'm really surprised to hear, I thought when you bought this, or when you started, I thought it was s- still agriculture, so it wasn't a change of use.
That's, so that's where we started two years ago on this. It, I didn't think it even needed to come here because there wasn't a change of use. I think the only thing that triggered that was the number of parking spaces.
Yes, and up, and in a cyclone that's triggered is the parking. If you had an approved site plan on file, it just triggers a minor site plan, no public hearing. It does everything that you would expect, but you don't have one.
But, through, through the chair a question, um, if, it's a pre-existing use, she's not changing the use, it was farmland before, it's agricultural before. So why she, she?
Be- because, so, the, the site plan requirements are triggered by how many parking spaces, like twenty, ten?
The addition.
We did, the addition of ten spots, and we're adding thirty. And so it would be a minor change to the site plan, had a site plan ever been filed.
Okay.
If the site plan was never filed, we can't change a site plan.
So the problem is not the added site plan.
Yeah, ice cream up there.
And what I, what I was saying, Kathy, is, I think, I think absolutely belongs to.
Pardon me?
Land that had the parking before, just belongs to part of the farm.
Oh, okay.
But I, 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 this is a complete filing, I would consider, and, and Mike, maybe you can give us some information on how you, you, when you're, you recommend, we recommend the planning board street, this is use, this is a commercial use. But it's an, it's a, a agricultural, uh, use, so we, we're told that strict compliance isn't necessarily the best thing for an agricultural use.
Yes, so the, the planning board has wide discretion, this is a, this is not a statutorily driven process, right? A site plan is entirely local, so, and as it dictates in your bylaw and in your rules and regulations, you have the ability to waive um, strict compliance with, with, with any and all of it. You can, uh, waive the requirements of site plan completely if the board felt that that was, um, was the phrasing in the, in the bylaw pursuant, uh, you know, the public interest in, in some way. Um, and, and also, and, uh, Tom emailed me yesterday, I think it was, um.
Please, go ahead, comply with my.
It also got me thinking, and it got me.
Something, just thinking.
Re, reevaluating this, I mean, the, and, and, and in my, and I apologize, I, I was working on this right before the meeting, so you know, I, I don't expect you to to read it, I was just, it was expected to be a, a living document as we were to go through the process, but on the the very first page, and Kathy, this is just, I'm just citing the existing, um, uh, site plan bylaw, that I just cite the triggers, right? And the, uh, I think it's the first trigger, which is the addition of ten or more spaces in conjunction with a, uh, multifamily institutional, uh, municipal, or commercial use. Now, my comment to Tom was none of those uses say agricultural. It's now where the state uses the phrase uh, commercial agricultural within, uh, master general law, um, for yay. Um, but that's still tied to agricultural. Um, and so, I, I was always, I just went, uh, the, the exercise of, of suggesting that, you know, the, this board could also determine, if you wanted to, that this is exempt from site plan pursuant to that, it doesn't, doesn't say agricultural, is it commercial, is it agricultural, commercial? I don't know, uh, but that's, that's a, it'd be a good distinction for this board to make, uh, where you want, where you incline to make it.
Well, though, we have to do, we have to do one or the other, either it's required to follow the site plan process.
Or we're not.
Or it doesn't rise to the level of a site plan process. And the, the first question I asked is, how many spaces do you have now? Because if you're not adding, if you're adding less than ten, you don't even need to come here.
Well, so, the, there's, and maybe, I don't know how many of you guys.
The problem is, if you had a site plan already on file and it said twenty-seven spaces and you're adding.
I mean, officially spaces or unofficial spaces? Use, right?
It's seasonal, your season.
Right, so we have like five currently, but unofficially, more than thirty, because they park on the grass. So, I think what we termed this was like making the unofficial spaces official? Um, you know, part of this whole thing, exercise two, is to improve the safety of all the customers that do come.
But that's one of the things we have to, we can't wait for safety, I did, in effect, if you're having a hundred people, you can't park, you need to park on the road, you, you, you should be going to the town and having somebody directing traffic, just, just for that time.
There's someone directing traffic.
Yeah, so, that's, that's the only, is safety and parking and access.
Right, so, so that's the whole, I think that's our whole, um, exercise in this, so.
How often do the police come down for offender vendors or for accidents?
Never.
Never, no incident was at all.
No, none.
So, uh, it's not broken right now, I'm not so sure the planning board should be fixing. But if you're gonna go for a driveway permit, you have to have a site plan on file. So I think your choices are.
Well, there's already a driveway.
But that's not, you applied for a site plan.
Well, I didn't know what to apply for.
But we have, if, if you're going to do something to the planning board, it's, it's just what.
Yeah, so, uh, so this question.
I guess my question is, the, you say that there's already a driveway.
Correct.
In the location that you're planning.
Yes, the driveway. Correct.
So, why are we here? So you, you, you've already got a curb cut, you've already got the driveway in place.
Tom's already been done, I've taken a look at it.
Um, I saw the fire chief had a question about turning radius, and you, and you suggested that, that W B A is gonna deal with that on the revision.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
Should there be a revision?
Should there be a revision? So, I guess I really don't know which way we need to go here, I mean, I'm.
I mean, I would suggest, I, I would suggest to the chair, uh, I would suggest the board determine whether or not you think this requires site plan. I mean, because that's, that's the.
Yeah.
That's the starting point.
Yeah.
Um, if it doesn't require a site plan, she can go ahead and, and do the work, I mean, she obviously, there still needs to go to Concom about it, but, uh, um, it, it just doesn't require this board's approval, I think, um, where you can waive site plan, uh, site plan compliance, I'll say, uh, in a way. Um, it's good to just retain this on file to confirm that the board has, has reviewed it.
The one, I guess, concerning that I, oh, sorry, just, just let me, the one concern that I have, I think that Tom raised, is giving the, a butters the chance to weigh in, to, to say. I, I suspect what they'll say is, oh yes, please get those cars off the street.
I was at our neighbor's house on Sunday night having strawberry shortcake. Well, I mean, they, I would say that we have a very good relationship with our neighbors. Um, I don't, I mean, I don't see any issue.
No, I, 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 I don't either, I think, but it is really the sort of formality, I think of.
I think that's why we're here, is just formality, and honestly, um, Tom, I didn't even know how to make that location, I was just like, I guess this is what you write, because this is what I.
You're, you're actually, that's what you.
You did, exactly.
Unfortunately, back in the very beginning of that bylaw, it says you can do all of this if you have a previously approved site plan.
Right.
So my point is, you're better off with a approved site plan, it's better financially because you have a site plan, everything you needed, it's approved by the town, run by the neighborhood, uh, run through the town, part of, I would, I would approve this subject to you coordinating with the town for traffic control when needed. And, but that's probably the only limitation I put on.
And Kathy, you were trying to say something, too.
Yeah, uh, that's why you stop the meetings and don't do it remotely. Um, yeah, the, the question I, I had was, what is the harm of doing a formal site plan, because if there's anything else that someone wants to do down the line, like put in a greenhouse, or, or something else, then there's a something in place, and it's not an onerous process. And it's not like you have a hundred of butters up there that have to be, um, connected. Um, and is it better to do something now than to wait until, you know, there's another, you know, addition to the property or something else that needs to be done? And I, I just don't see the harm in going for, you know, I could go both ways, depending on what you wanted to, but I don't see the harm in site plan approval.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with you, I also wonder if you were to turn around next year for whatever reason and say, we, we want to sell this, if having a, a, an approved site plan would help in that, in that regard.
I think the one biggest hurdle is why we're here anyways, the financial impact of all of it. Um, you know, having this piece of paper already cost me more than I even, uh, what in my wildest imagination. Um, and that's not even the work.
But, but, through the chair, if I may, about the money, money, we're not supposed to consider the money at all, right?
Yeah, I think that's.
But we, you and me do.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And, and it's a good use of the property, it's a wonderful addition to the town, so I have no problems working with you to try and, and get through the easiest, most cost-effective.
Yeah, and I think that's also why.
And I guess my other question is, when did you want to build this, when did you want to do it?
Yesterday.
That's, because that is the other thing, so if it's a, if we do a site plan, there has to be a, an advertisement, uh, and that wouldn't be able to happen by the, on the next meeting, because it wouldn't be in, in.
It'd have to be the first meeting in July, in July.
Yeah, but they have de facto parking there anyway, so they do want to start it like yesterday, but it doesn't mean.
They'll probably want it in ten years ago.
Yeah, you know, but that doesn't mean that if it.
Wonderful conversations with your dad.
Oh, you bet he'll be out there, he might just be in a chair. He's turning eighty in December, and he's our traffic.
Yes.
Attendant.
He's great at it, by the way.
But Mike, can I ask you a question about the easiest course of action here?
Please.
I think the easiest thing to do is take this application and make it into a site. What it doesn't actually deserve anything specific, it's proposal site plan, is just approve this layout, the one that says existing, the one that says, uh, proposed. This is your existing, this is your proposed, take this out.
So actually, she does check site plan approval, not site plan modification.
Yeah.
So, so that's already there, sorry.
Well, it's, it's preliminary site plan, it's, and it says driveway and parking area, that changes those two, it's just simply a site plan approval. This. But I've just not changed the application form and leave all the context.
And not have to change the expensive map again, right?
Yeah, and then, the site plan is this, it's, it's what's existing.
And what's proposed.
Proposed, and then you focus on what's proposed, you have all the backup, the specific technical data, we have to be on the plan, you're not in the center of town, this isn't a Walmart, this is, I'm not so sure we need to to the strict, uh, requirement on, on the details. So I think you're all set to go, as long as it's just for a typical site plan, it's a public hearing and I think that's what I would, um, recommend.
Tom, so are you still suggesting the formal site plan to be scheduled for a public hearing at a.
Yes, that's what he was suggesting.
Schedule a public hearing, involve the neighbors.
Yeah.
You have your application, you just tell the neighbors what you're doing.
Oh, okay, so you're inclined to, based on the information that you've received tonight, you would be inclined to, without committing ahead of time, uh, to waive technical compliance, uh, with anything else, uh, with regard.
We just aren't in here, we don't need, we don't say, I, 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 this is everything we need technically.
Yes.
Technical compliance is here, what we don't have is conservation stuff.
Right, but that's.
But they're your best friends, and they'll, and they'll invite.
I mean, you can come tomorrow. We, uh, we are, you know, we, we can, we can make it contingent on their approval, well, we don't alter their approval in any way, that's.
No, but, but, but that's, but being this is sensitive for sanctuary.
Okay, just, just through the chair, I think one of her original questions when she was before us, or when this. Was the money.
Yeah.
And is there, because, um, you know, there is, there are financial implications to this. And I know that, you know, for developments and stuff, we take bonds, we take application fees, but there still has to be advertising and note of, a butter notification.
And that's why we, we asked on the money piece, that was why we asked for other boards to weigh in, to see whether we were gonna feel like we needed an engineering review, and it doesn't seem like we need an engineering review. So, other than the, other than the, uh, advertising fee and, and, and notification, I don't think.
Advertising and notification is the others. The latest assessors list.
Oh, I have that.
And you probably don't have a lot of butters.
I think there's twelve.
It's, it's certified, and you have a return receipt request.
I'm gonna get the, the signature page this time.
That's, uh, but, uh.
Oh, Grace, we're gonna be best friends again.
Yeah, I, I, I think that is the best way to go, is to, and are those butters, no, that, is that for this?
Yes.
For tomorrow, okay.
Which I did wrong.
Oh. Okay, uh, does that make sense to everybody, is everyone, are you okay with that? Because I will put you on for a public hearing at the next one, and then we'll feel like we've got all our i's dotted and p's crossed, and so, on the road, it should protect you.
So, what I'm hearing is that I just changed the language on the application, and it is. I just have to get the butters to notify if anyone wants to come in.
Yeah.
And who's being.
And you'll tell them the same story, this is what you're doing.
Yes.
They'll, they'll ask.
They're probably gonna ask me, are you gonna be able to plant this tree here, and this over here?
Yes, they will.
Whatever you want me to do.
If they don't, they're not good neighbors.
And, and you, and Grace will do the epitome of the way, the way that, for the Concom here tomorrow.
We already know Michael and Grace are phenomenal.
Two times in two weeks, and you, you, you set out next meeting.
Oh, that's because I'm not gonna be here in.
You're next meeting, I'm, I'm next meeting, I'm not here in the.
Yeah, they just should be sometime, if, since you get the list for you, but you have listed already, that's sending him on to the neighborhood. Uh, but, you know, the, the best thing about this is what Kathy said, in a couple of years, when you want to make a little change, fine, just go through and you.
And you just tell us, you know, so.
And I, and I think you're all set, documentation-wise, engineering-wise, survey-wise.
I think so, but we're gonna keep the first one.
Justify them. Minimize, and there's no safety. Minimize and there's no safety issues with.
Right, yeah. I think the reason when the engineering route is for the safety.
And tha- and that's why this is enough for us to say, yeah, the engineers have looked at it.
Okay.
But the one thing I tried to say earlier is that Michael and Grace are phenomenal assets. So if you do have a question, especially if it's a question on the, on the, uh, forum or anything like that, just run it by them. They're, I mean, I I assume you know them well already, but they're really good.
Oh, those two well.
Okay.
And the and the other thing is that the plan, this is not the stamped plan, but I assume that by now there's a stamped plan if you're going to con con.
Well, that's the whole, that's why I said this was a little not by the books. Um, I know these plans will get me so far without the stamp and I think the engineers know that too. And so we were trying to get as much input from Exxon on the surplus legs before we tell them to put it all in so that.
I I instructed Grace to hold off on making any changes.
Any changes until, yeah, that makes sense.
She could talk to all the boards.
Yeah.
And then make all the changes at once, uh, because, yeah, no, it's expensive every time you get.
Oh, yes.
So I appreciate you guys very much.
I I want you to stay so if we can do it right, make it easy in the future.
I don't know.
Appreciated us. Someone said they appreciated us. You missed a moment.
This is probably the easiest. Well, this took the longest.
Yeah.
Easy, because it's a lot of money for sure.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
For sure. Um, but I.
Con con, con con, right? There aren't as flexible.
First thing was, please tell me you have twenty seven parking spaces.
Oh, I I would, yes, in the grass. We do, we do. My dad counted all of them. He started.
Upgrade.
Yeah, I didn't know how, like, that was like, how to. Yeah, visualize.
Through through the chair, I mean, that's that's also up to you get, you getting at a, a, a core principle here. That's up to the the board, how you want to treat that. I mean, uh, there are all sorts of things at play that to make that sort of determination, but it's, you know, it's up to this board whether or not you think the transition from informal parking to where there is no designated parking and and no way to really quantify it other than to get a bunch of cars in there and see how many fit. Well, first is the transition to the formal parking and does that count as adding spaces?
I'm trying to remember how how our site plan addresses that. Doesn't it just say proper dimensions? In size, it doesn't really mention surface or.
Or lines.
Well, so, yeah, and 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 it it only says that for the commercial, industrial and general business districts.
But here, we could have them put a post stake at the end of the thing in the grass.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, or just.
So one thing, I think, my interest, this is outside of this, is in every other sort of business dealing with the farm, you either have the agricultural rules or, and whatever. I think in the Upton zoning bylaws, there's no real mention of agriculture. So that was like, I mean, which is fine because we're probably one of the only ones.
Well, that's, that's where we started. For us, a, a, a commercial site plan, it could be a McDonald's.
Right.
Or.
Right.
Farm stand.
Yeah.
And and I think that if, you know, if that's gonna be part of up in in the future, I know I've had so many conversations.
But the state gives us and we have advice to use the use of commercial in agriculture is for planning what is different than the use of a commercial and a pavement down.
Yeah, and I think we've had that.
It's not, it's not in bylaws.
Right.
That way, but what if this was gonna be a, 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 you know, a script and all? We would have to use those bylaws for that. We're allowed the, uh, freedom to not request.
Okay, you can never retire then.
I think you will.
I've almost retired for many years.
Like that roach, I'm like.
It was, it's, yeah, we've done it a couple of years when I started.
Great.
Pushing fifty must be.
All right, anything else on this?
No, I think I have all I need. I guess I will come in.
Do you have any questions on what what the work wants, wants us to be pretty clearly?
No, I think I have a handle on it. I mean, uh, the, we're gonna proceed with the formal public hearing at the July ninth meeting. Um, and it, we're not expecting any revisions or anything because we're considering this to be filed uh, in whole essentially.
Well, we already have the reviews from the the experts that we.
Everybody has looked at it. Uh, she's met with Pat Roach on it. Uh, we, I got the comments from fire department. I know she's working with the DPW, uh, with regard to the, the driveway, um, and was guard rail outside. Um, so, yeah, she's cross her t's, dot all her i's. When she says she, uh, would have had this done yesterday, I appreciate that because some people in town say that and they had.
We try to do things the right way. Try.
And we appreciate that.
Public hearing just for the neighbors.
Yep, yes.
Anybody else?
I hear you. Great, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. You guys should come down.
The weather's cooperating.
This year, yes. We're gonna start watering next week, I think.
Must be dry, so I said it's something completely beautiful.
Yeah.
Dry.
All right, thank you.
Guys, thank you.
Okay.
And good luck.
Okay, we want to go back to the MBTA communities.
So, um, through the chair, I I just put what's on the agenda, just to kind of shore up our our next steps on this. And we met with RKG last time. So basically, I just want a confirmation from the the board, um, on the proposed potential districts. Because our next step is, as outlined in the scope for RKG, public outreach. And so we, you know, it'd be best to have, uh, the board have identified or solidified those potential districts that actually engage the public with. Um, and.
Do we want to use districts or district?
That's i- is why I'm asking the question, yeah. So do you want to just proceed with the, that, I'll, I'll just call it the governor's landing site for right now, uh, with elimination of the center business district? Or you want to go?
Well, districts are either residential, which is fifteen thousand is our minimum.
No, 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 this is the MBTA makers, we're we're saying you could.
Right, and where are we going to put it? And I'm saying we have zones to put it in. Agricultural residential, which is gonna go from one lot in eighty thousand to ten lots.
Right, and so we, so we can outline exactly where we want that to be and one proposal is.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If if we do that with agricultural residential, it's gonna be what, twenty times? If it's at eighty thousand and and it's, uh, it's ten per acre, you're only talking almost twenty units for an eighty thousand square foot thing. Is that correct? You're taking a currently zone eighty thousand square feet and you break it into two, uh, two acres.
Yes.
You could allow ten on each acre, is that correct?
I I think so.
I believe it's when they saw tens of acre.
I think, but the question that we're talking about, Tom, is that there were proposals for two different possible locations for this. One was a governor's landing and one was in the up, in Upton Center. And what, what we're being asked now, what Michael wants to know is, do we go through, do we go forward and say, these are the two places we want to consider? Or do we just want to consider the governor's landing?
Oh, I didn't know we would already pick those and we're limited.
That's where.
We are not necessarily limited.
But but that was the recommendation we got from the consultant last week.
Those are too low, low hanging fruit, so to speak.
And in my opinion, they're pretty low hanging fruit, but if, but, um, like I mentioned last meeting too, you're not restricted to it. If we wanted to change course and select a different area, w- we can absolutely do that and I can have RKG rerun the numbers on it.
Governor's landing, putting ten units there.
Oh, I should clarify, when I say governor's landing site, no, I'm trying, I'm trying to bring it up now.
That'd be from the railroad.
It's just, no, 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 it's just the general business district.
Strip along the road.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, you know, just to, you know, have a point, um, just to raise a point with that. Um, you know, I would definitely support the governor's landing because it minimizes the new units required in Upton because that's already being relatively densely developed anyway. Um, and the other thing is, politics has really entered heavily into this whole discussion. And I think that when you're looking at that section of Main Street going up one forty, it's not gonna be in anyone's, you know, it's gonna be in very few people's backyards or front yards. Um, and it's already a subdivision going in there. So I think politically, it would be the easiest one to get through to.
I honestly, I would definitely support governor's landing. So just the governor's landings in Upton already meet the requirements in fact.
We'd have to give them. We'd have to give them more density.
Well, we've been, we would have to give them more density than they've already proposed.
Correct. So you do that, you do it through zoning change or you do it through zoning change?
Yes.
It'd be spot on, in a sense.
Well, the MBTA community. Yes. Yeah.
Um, it would be, so I'm just trying to bring it up, so we're looking at it. Kathy, I'll share my screen in just a second. So this is governor's landing, this entire stretch, right?
Sixty acres or so?
Yeah, I think it's eighty. Uh, you you might be right.
In total, in the two some.
Yeah. Okay, so here's the governor's landing site and I I don't have it correctly, uh, denoted on my my GIS here, so I'll just, I'll just play around with it here, uh, from memory. It's, would be basically uh, something like, okay, oh, wait.
No, that's, that's, it's not too.
No, it's not too far.
Okay.
This, I'm sorry. It's, this is three hundred feet off the road, which is the general business district off that, so. And then this is governor's landing site, comes on this little leg right here. Um, this is, uh, Holly Johnson owns this parcel. She she does the body fix. So that area, so that approximately three hundred feet, let's say it's about there, um, down to roughly.
Down to the rug, yeah.
Oh, I think I did go too far.
Yeah, I do too, because there's those lots.
I think I excluded those. Yes, I did, because this is what I'm getting at. Oh, maybe, no, maybe it's roughly right, because it, the district was.
Eighty, it would make sense because the subdivision was always sixty, around sixty, it was also sixty acres, so.
So.
The district that fed the model was about fourteen acres.
Fourteen acres, that's right in there. That's where the, that's where it would be.
Yeah.
Total sense.
That would be the easiest thing to get through town meeting by far, because it's already been, we've already given an approval for a high density subdivision in there. And it is not in as many backyards as.
I love it. And I, I mean, by by going through the, where the hell else could you put this?
That's, I've, I've gone through my mind, where, where could you put this thing? And ten.
It's actually on Fowler Street next to the golf course.
Free passes for everybody. But but where in the town, like, with that, you wouldn't have a, a, an uproar from the neighborhood?
No.
Right, where else would you put this?
Yeah.
And you've already had discussions with the developer, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Of course, they're all for it.
Really?
I mean.
Well, they're gonna just put one house in there now, aren't they?
I think this is the Cook's property, right? Um, I mean, this was also a s- a possible suggestion. The other, the only problem with it is, it's sort of a big problem, but it's not a problem from a, a legal approvability to the AG's office is infrastructure, there's no infrastructure down there. So, uh, by putting it there, you're, you then require, um, whoever were to develop, they would have to create their own.
Right, and there's a lot of wet in there.
Yeah, so then.
Yeah, and it's also too big, because if you are rezoning that to put in multifamily by right, there's a big difference to putting multifamily in by right on fifteen acres of something that's already heavily developed and forty five acres of undeveloped land.
Yeah, so fourteen acres, yeah, Kathy, so through the chair, fourteen acres generates just, just over the, the minimum, which is a hundred and fifty units versus zoning for a larger parcel like that is obviously gonna, uh, kick out a much larger number.
Yeah.
Which I think I've expressed concern to this board before, you don't want to go to town meeting and it's impossible, yeah.
Yeah, no, I I personally am in favor of just going with the personal landing site.
Yeah.
Anyone feel differently than that?
Traffic impact, perfect spot. Well, if you're looking at, uh, if we did a traffic impact on that to do that, you'd be coming out onto one forty, you'd be going to four ninety-five.
Yeah.
Which is another two hundred cars on top of fifteen hundred cars that go, that's not enough to change the road, but they're already doing the road.
Yes, it's gonna make my drive to work harder because I'm gonna have to drive across one forty and.
But I don't think it's gonna affect
Yeah.
The, the town's traffic problems any more than it already is. Now, that's a, a tax boom.
Well, well, actually, I'm gonna be going to the MBTA because it's an MBTA.
Use it if you're seniors. Um, through the chair, I have another question. Um, on the governor's landing site, the density will, but how many additional units will it be? Because there's a boatload of units going in there already. So how many additional units will there be if that fifteen acres is designated? It's not fifty additional.
Twenty seven, I think, units proposed in in that section right now, and those were the townhouse, garden, apartment. Um, special permit, um, and so, yeah, yeah, so we are roughly a hundred.
Let's have a lot. So ninety, well, yeah, well, so because that's just really three to four times the density that it is.
Right, but it's also that number's less than what the minimum requirement is. Uh, brand new land that is in approved running units.
But if they went eighteen thousand, if they, that's closest to a forty thousand square foot zone, the zone C. But the zone, I guess it's gonna allow it to be fifteen thousand. That's the density that they applied for.
Well, that's, it's not that, it's, it's, we're required to have some place with that.
But the, the, the rule on condominiums or on, in a general business.
Yes.
Is that it has to match the closest residential zone.
Yeah.
It does not, the closest residential zone is C. So those should be one unit per acre. I think they've applied for the three, the fifteen thousand.
The way it was, well, I mean, the, the, that, um, that development, I believe the way that that was approved is both this board and the zoning board looked at the site as a whole because it did, it did cross multiple districts.
We had no jurisdiction of the general business. We had no, to change that, we did not have a planning board had no jurisdiction on whether that.
We didn't change the use, but we still did the site.
Yeah, you, uh, this board approved of so the site plan and the, um, senior.
Yeah.
Housing.
But we didn't have the responsibility on the number of units allowed. That's zoning board call.
Oh, yeah, yes.
And they, the zoning board allowed three units per acre or fifteen thousand zone, zone A. Uh, square footage.
Yes, yes.
When, our bylaws says that the square footage should be the closest residential zone, which is forty thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think they used, I think they did use SRC, but that, again, I think they, because the, the, the boundary lines of those lots were all proposed to change. And, you know, instead of having five or six lots, because they have the, the smaller, like, little tiny lots, um, um, these were all set to be merged together, um, to create one larger, uh, lot that I, I believe, again, I'm not looking at it, I'm scratching my head to remember exactly, but I believe it was approved, uh, with the proposed new lots that would sustain those units. I, I think, uh, uh, met the requirement, Tom, that you were talking about for the SRC, not the SRA.
But now it's gonna be changed anyway, so.
So, do you have everything you need then on that?
I, I think I do. So I, I will, I'll, I'll get back to RKG to confirm this is what we want to go with and I'll reach out to them to begin the next step for the outreach and they'll wanna, um, uh, with me, create, uh, an opportunity for a public meeting of some kind, you know, it can either be a formal, uh, planning.
I mean, we should get Paul Carey to come and run it.
I think so too.
The last time he did.
Mike, out of curiosity, what was this, what was the plan for the center, the other space that they suggested?
It was in two different places, right?
Yeah, it was, um, yeah, and this, this doesn't have the zoning on it, but it would help to have, um, the zoning on it because the, the. the zoning on it, because the, the other district was roughly, I'll just, you know, something like this that matched the UCBD district.
It was kind of an overlay, Ken, it was an overlay of a lot of existing properties and houses and.
Yeah, that was, there would be so much.
That's messy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be hard to, you know, again, we had this conversation, that makes perfect sense from a planning point of view. Infill development to support your downtown district, to support the businesses in that district by putting people with, you know, injecting money, you know, exponential income to support those businesses, yada, yada, yada. And, and the, the, the reality of the units that that would generate would probably be far less than by citing it at governor's landing, because of what you just said, because of all the homes and the individuals who live there who are unlikely to just sell their home, all agree all at once to sell their home to a developer who then takes over the entire, just like, it's never gonna happen.
But this would also never pass town meeting, it would never pass town meeting.
But it wouldn't have probably.
No.
I mean, especially branded as MBTA.
When we, yeah, when we, when we tried to do some changes in that, that was the, the public meeting where people got up, the guy was accusing us of working for the UN.
Yes, sure.
And.
Poor Gary.
It's Gary or Paul, it was, it was Paul. The, the Agenda Twenty One guy was there, and the guy who was worried about his Dunkin' Donuts.
He's the son, but he's not used to taking a lot of crap.
Worried about the Dunkin' Donuts and the lines, and we're thinking, what's this?
That used to be a restaurant. Was Dunkin' Donuts before?
It was available place.
I don't know, but anyway, I, I, I think that this makes the most sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I distributed the draft bylaw, and I would say I wasn't expecting really anything results of that, other than it's just, that's for your reference going forward, just probably the model will be working off just slight changes.
Really?
Um, so, so, all right, I'll, I'll reach out to RKG and get the next steps up and running. I'm hoping we can accomplish something by the end of July with like a public outreach. Maybe that's, you know, a bit aggressive, but i- i- if the board wants to have this on for this town meeting, it, I do need to be a bit aggressive with the timeline to try and make.
For the fall.
Yeah.
And I, I, I think we should get it in for the twelfth, just in case something fails.
So we have, we have another shot before the.
Shot, yeah.
Absolutely.
Why is it, why the rush, that it's not till the end of next year, right?
It is till the end of next year, you're right, that's, but that's totally up to the board how you wanna proceed with it.
You have, you're doing all the work, what do you think?
I, I mean, I, I don't mind aiming for town meetings, if, if, if I can get us to a place where we're comfortable enough with everything to be, because we're not doing last minute changes or anything like that. You know, maybe, 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 maybe we missed that deadline, or we're not comfortable going forward at the time, we hold off till spring. It still gives you one more shot at fall town meeting at the end of twenty twenty-five. I say I'm concerned about how quickly those things come up, and I, I. If, if this board is in a good spot to try and get it at town meeting this year, I think it'd be a good litmus test.
I do too, I think, and I think going to annual with the first shot at it might be dangerous.
And you'll, you won't have as much time to try and regroup and figure out what you need to figure out ahead of the next one, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Mayflower Road, do we want, is there?
I don't have any updates.
All right, anything else?
Dinner.
Dinner, Paul needs dinner, so.
We adjourn.
All right, I heard, we should adjourn. I think we are adjourned in the meeting.